Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other businesses of the city. Washington State, per the federal guidelines, has lifted the requirements for face coverings for vaccinated individuals in most situations. Therefore, council members, staff, and the public who are vaccinated may attend this meeting without a face covering. Those individuals who have not been vaccinated will need to continue wearing face masks in the meeting until the order has been lifted by the state of Washington. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wal.gov/agenda. And the City Council meetings may also be accessed online through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with housekeeping out of the way, we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Serrano's excuse tonight.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present, thank you. Maybe I'll rise for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council meeting held on July 6, 2021, and special meeting and workshop held on July 12, 2021. We have bills and communications to approve claims in a total amount of $5,726,969.61 and to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court accounts receivable in a total amount of $141,052.99. And of that amount, authorized zero to be turned over for collections. Item C on the consent agenda is to move to approve Resolution Number 4077 waiving the competitive bidding requirements and approving specifications requiring specific sole-sourced components of the traffic signal system for the traffic signal improvement citywide Phase Two project. Item D is a resolution, to approve Resolution Number 4078 authorizing execution of a $5 million, excuse me, $5 million loan agreement with the Washington State Department of Health for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Expansion Phase One Project. So with that, if there's no questions or comments or any changes, I would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution, I'm sorry, I move to approve Consent Agenda as Read.
So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Milne. And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Martinez.
Yes, I pass as unanimously, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have proclamations and acknowledgements and listed. And next on our agenda, we have for visitors other than agenda items. So this item is to provide, to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comment and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, I know we have one individual who has signed up for a public comment, and that individual is Marla Marvin. Is Marla on the line tonight?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hello, Marla Marvin, are you on the line? Hello, Marla, are you on the line tonight?
Mr. Mayor, she appears to be self. Yeah, she appears to be self-muted, but...
Well, I'll tell you what, we, I suspect we have somebody else we could maybe give her a couple of minutes to get unmuted somehow. And I'll open up the opportunity for anybody else in the audience who has something they'd like to share that's not on the agenda item.
I love your comments, but I don't know if you want to do it on the end or right now.
This would be the opportunity for you to come up and speak for an item that's not on the agenda.
Oh, that would be from, personally, okay, so.
Yep.
Good afternoon. I guess everybody knows me. Everybody knows that I close the restaurant, and I personally blame the City Council for this. And I told you, I'm gonna say why. I opened my restaurant on April 2019, and July 2019, my place was vandalized. I was kinda like, who did it, who did it? Now we all know who did it. I'm not gonna say the name because I cannot prove it, but we know who did. Then the pandemic came, and my restaurant went down, and I was allowed by the city code to open the back lounge. Everybody knows that. And I opened my back from October to, I believe, June, the day come out. Out of the blue, on May 6, May 12, I got a letter from the city code that they went into my restaurant on May 6. Let's point this out, May 6, COVID was still on. Because one of the things that city code said, is that they're allowing me to open the back while COVID, well, May 6, COVID was still on. And the city code said, we went to your restaurant on May 6, and they sent me a letter, we're like, well, May 6, I was closed. So that means something was weird. So anyways, I did, everybody knows this, I did the federal information, and I find out that David Cortina was behind what's going on. And then after, after I bring it out to the city council, the city code came out with a bench even hotter. They didn't move one finger. The Troy went to my restaurant, and the stairs is like, find a way for me to open, he went back and was more strict than ever. I even, I even told this guy, can I open the back and close the front? And he said, no. I said, why? And he answered, was like, I cannot keep, I cannot look out for you open the front. And I said, no. And then we went back and forth anyways. He made it almost impossible for this. Now, I find out that David Cortina, and I want somebody to tell me why, was allowed to four, to close four city blocks, four, not one, not two, not three, four city blocks on July 10 to do a private event. And my question to you guys is, why? If this guy is, while the pandemic was on, he was complaining about every single new business in downtown Pasco and Pasco. And then he comes around, he doesn't own a business in downtown Pasco, he does not. And the city allow him to open, to close downtown Pasco for a whole day, four blocks. I know it's David Cortina and his people, but I'm wondering, if I decide not to close my restaurant, will you guys allow me to close four city blocks for a whole day? And I got a lot more to say, but I want this one, I want this one out of my mind. Because everybody knows that David Cortina and his people are after me. And I came here, this is another one where I wanna say, you guys know me, I've been coming here since last year. And then, and the beginning was C2, C2, and I went to that one, I went to a meeting out there in 68, I went to a meeting out there, C2, C2, C2. They figured out they cannot get me with C2, and now it's code enforcement. And I was open for eight months, and nobody said anything. And the guy from the conference said, oh, you were allowed to do only while COVID was, oh, you came after me while COVID was on. Because the letter was on May 6. He said he went to my restaurant on May 6, and we were closing. So this is why I'm here. I believe the city of Pasco is allowed David Cortina to run the city. Why? Why is that happening? Why you guys allow this guy to do whatever he wants? Why is this guy after me? You know, when, when, when I went to open the restaurant, and I decided Pasco is because I saw the opportunity that, hey, they only got Mexican stuff out there. I opened a Cuban restaurant, diversity, new stuff, and all of a sudden, somebody doesn't like it, and the city is gonna allow for them to run me out? Because not even the person on my district had ever come out to my restaurant to ask, what's going on? How can I help you? The only person so far has been Dave Zabel and Mike Gonzalez. Mike Gonzalez has been unbelievable. He's done, he's trying to do everything, but the city code doesn't allow him to do anything. I even wanna open the back, hey, the guy said that you have supposedly, I haven't seen the code, he never sent it to me, supposedly I got 5,300 square feet. And I gotta do, they'll bring it down to 5,000, but he's doing a firewall, blah, blah, blah. So I said, okay, fine.
Mr. Morales, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up real quick.
You want me to get, you don't wanna listen, do you? Okay, fine, that's good.
Mr. Morales.
Now, now you make my point.
Mr. Morales.
You make my point or not, the city, I'm gonna say it in the record, you making my point. The city doesn't care about it, he, he runs me out, the city doesn't care about anything, the city is after me, and you just proved it, come on.
My suggestion would be that you would...
Are you listening? I didn't, any of people, I came here on...
Mr. Morales.
I came, I came to this council on, when, I came here on June 21st, and I went and showed everything besides Mike Gonzalez, who have reached out to me? Did you reach out to me? You went to my restaurant? Oh, yeah, you did.
I did, I went to your restaurant.
I forgot. So you proved my point.
I went to your restaurant.
Listen, you proved my point. You don't wanna listen to me, that's fine. I, I'm not going away. I live, listen.
Mr. Morales.
I live on the city of Pasco. I'm gonna come here every two weeks.
Mr. Morales, nothing's gonna get settled tonight. My suggestion is that you would get with Mr. Zabel and have...
I just wanted answers from you, why, why is Cortina allowed to run people out of town? Why is Cortina allowed to choose which business is gonna open now in downtown Pasco?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. You prove, you prove my point.
All right, anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to share tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On a happier note, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Washington in northern Idaho. I am the Director of Mission Delivery. I've been researching, I actually had a speech, but I don't know how much time, they just tell me I have three minutes. I can go ahead and read it. I'm here today to tell you about the Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts prepares girls for a lifetime of leadership, success, and adventure in a safe, no-limit place designed for and by girls. Through the Girl Scout Leadership Experience, a collection of engaging, challenging, and fun activities like earning badges, going on awesome trips, selling cookies, exploring science, getting outdoors, and doing community service projects. At Girl Scouts, girls lead their own adventure and team up with other girls in an all-environment to choose the exciting, hands-on activity that interests them most. The idea is to learn by doing, and at Girl Scouts, she'll do lots of it. She'll be inspired to discover her talents and passions in safe and supportive all-girls settings. She'll join with other Girl Scouts and people in her community, and together, they'll take action to change the world. Along the way, she'll gain important skills in four areas that form the foundation of Girl Scouts leadership experience. One system, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, outdoors, life skills and entrepreneurship. While she may discover and be exposed to these subjects at school, in other youth programs or even on her own, at Girl Scouts, she'll experience them in a unique way that puts her on a path to a lifetime of leadership, adventure, and success. And because our program is girl-led, girls decide what they do together. In fact, being a Girl Scout helps girls thrive in five key ways. As a Girl Scout, she develops a strong sense of self, displays the positive values, seeks challenges, and learns from setbacks, forms and maintains healthy relationships, learns to identify and solve problems in her community. With Girl Scouts, girls do more than they could ever imagine. They dream bigger than they can ever imagine. Oh, yeah, and they can change the world for herself and for others. Who knew kayaking, building robots, or selling cookies could help her do all that? I just described a traditional Girl Scout program. We have a new program called Pathfinding. Pathfinding consists of providing these type of services to Title I schools. However, as you know, Title I schools, they are made up of all low-income students. We have been granted a grant by Women's Helping Women, and we will be starting three, two to three of these groups in elementaries. However, we wanna do it in every single Title I school. We can't do it without the community support. So I'm here to see, I've been researching what we can do, I just came on board with the Girl Scouts, what we can do for the girls. By experience, I know some of you are parents of Girl Scouts. It makes such a big impact in our community. I, my daughter has been a Girl Scout since she was a Daisy, and you see this young, she's a junior, she'll be a junior, you see this young, confident leader, ready to conquer the world, and I wanna give that opportunity to every single girl that's out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that could, that, city manager Dave Zabel, that she could reach out to that maybe see if there's some type of, first of all, I wanna say that I'm this size because of Girl Scouts.
Good.
I love their cookies that they sell, I even have those badges that, that you sell to elected official, and I would give, I'd give them one of those. So anyway, just wanted to know.
Thank you.
I support the Girl Scouts, and I love them, and I hope that, you know, we'll do whatever we can to assist, but maybe you can get with city manager Dave Zabel, and he can direct you to some more resources that would help out in Title I schools or where, however we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, oh, yes, so we got, next person, one come up and...
Good evening. I guess I wasn't planning on speaking today, but after hearing the owner of the Havana Cafe and having a father who is a local business owner here in Pasco, I just feel the need to say something. And also, as someone who's on the DPDA board, who knows, I have to also work to build those community relations with downtown business owners. The City Council and staff does have responsibility to support business owners to be successful. And it was heartbreaking, really heartbreaking to hear that a single individual has been able to harass the owner of the Havana Cafe with code enforcement after such a hard year. My dad has been really impacted by the pandemic as a local business owner, so I really personally know the impact that it has on families and our community. So I just feel like this is not aligned with the customer service goal that the Council has set for the city of Pasco, and just wanted to have that on the record and speak on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we understand, just so you know, we understand, and we do the best we can as a city and staff to help out our business owners and our community. But there's a lot of rules we have to abide by, there's a lot of safety requirements we have to abide by to meet our, the expectations of city code and the Washington State code. So we do, you know, we have these regulations in place to make sure that our community is safe while they're actually trying to do business as well. So, yes, it's very difficult, and sometimes there's challenges, but we try hard to work together and, and see how we can make it work. Mr. Marvin, would you like to come up?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm running a little bit late. I wished I could have been here behind Leo, but I wanna speak on Leo's behalf a little bit. I think that the City Council owes Leo an explanation. I was at those meetings that he was at, and I heard your response to him then, and I see the results now. The first meeting that Leo addressed to you guys at El Pedro Gallo was the first meeting, that's the first time I met Leo, and that's where our, our relationship began and continues today. But I feel he's been done a disservice by, by the city of Pasco, from the staff to especially the council. The reason I believe that is, is as I got to know Leo and started to build a relationship with him, he reached out to me sometimes, what should I do in these scenarios? And I encouraged him to reach out to the council, which I believe he did in a lot of cases, and I encouraged him to reach out to staff, and which he did in a lot of cases. And the results are today, he's not planning to reopen his business. I read those letters that was sent to him from code enforcement, and I think we've done a disservice. We, we have the DPDA that we say that we're working on small businesses in downtown Pasco, and, and we say that we're trying to revitalize downtown Pasco, and we have the example that we, that's not what we're doing with Leo. We put $6 million into Peanuts Park, it's less than a block from his business, and yet, where's Leo's help? I recognize that there's, there's rules that we have to follow, I recognize that there's, there's ways that we have to get along with our neighbors and do those things, but today still, I can't get an explanation of why do we still have C2 zoning? That was 40 years ago, whenever there's an issue, and that we put that in there to deal with it. Why do we still have C2 zoning? The council said that they were gonna look into it. I don't know if you did, I haven't heard anything, and, and I don't understand. I watched Leo work hard, I watched him get, get, get accused of remodeling his, his restaurant. He didn't, he painted the, he painted the walls and he, and he put some new flooring down. That's not remodeling, that's, that's updating and maintaining what you have. I was there, I've been to his restaurant dozens and dozens of times now, eaten there, and I'm really disappointed to feel needed, feel the need to stand here tonight and ask why? Why is Leo in the scenario that he's in? I recognize that there's, that there's rules that we have to follow, like I said, but how is, how is a business like his supposed to go put, to go put sprinkler systems in there? And once you start this chain of events, how is it ever supposed to stop? You're the City Council, it's your shoulders. If it's not right, you need to change it. You need to make the decision, the C2 zoning needs to go, or it needs to be altered. That's up to you. That's why you were, that's why you were hired by the public to do the job that you have. I appreciate your representation, I know you each personally, and I appreciate knowing you and the relationships I've built with you, but I'm really disappointed to hear what Leo had to say. That was coming from a broken heart. He told me that over two weeks ago, that he was gonna come and stand here tonight and say that. That, that really hurts to hear what he had to say. I don't, I don't, I don't have to gain or lose from this, other than Pasco's my city. And I, I feel that, that we've done him a disservice, so I, I think that we, that the Council owes the public an explanation of why we're here today with this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and, and thank you for coming out and speaking. I would ask staff if they could clarify two points for us. I'd ask Mr. Ferguson to talk about gifting of public funds, and, and what that means and how, and how it would apply to, for example, you know, direct assistance to businesses, including for remodels and such. And I would ask Mr. White or whoever else would be appropriate to talk about international fire code and what, what power the City Council does or does not have to exempt from that. And maybe Mr. Ferguson, you're in appropriate shoes to be able to answer that one as well.
Sure, I can just give you a brief overview, but essentially, what gifting of public funds means is that under our state constitution, governments are not allowed to take taxpayers' resources and use those for anything that's other than a fundamental government purpose. And then if, if it's determined, and that would be defined as traditional public or government functions, water, sewer, fire, police, those types of things. Anything other than that has to go through another test to determine whether that's something that could be used for, or tax dollars could be used for. And then the analysis kinda goes into the two-part test of whether there was a donor of intent, and then after that, whether, if there was, if there was not a donor of intent, whether the, the consideration that the city received in return was adequate. So I won't bore everybody with all the details, but suffice it to say that we have to be very careful, because it is in our state constitution that public funds have to always be used for public purposes and cannot go to specific individuals for their particular business interest. And so that's, that's something that our state is, is fairly unique to our state, and we have to be very careful of.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can staff talk about international fire code and what ability the City Council has to, to exempt a business from this or to otherwise impact that?
The International Fire Code is part of the state hierarchy of building code laws that pertain to, in this case, fire code measures to reduce fire hazards from fire safety violations. It's a state building code, the city cannot waive the requirements of that code. They can be made more strict, they cannot be made less strict. And in order to make them even more strict, there's a process to go through with creating a building code approved by the state building code council and applied in a unique manner to each individual city that wants to make those kinds of changes. So you can go more strict, but not less strict. And in this case, the International Fire Code requires sprinkling for certain activities, including what's called A2 occupancies, assembly kind of occupancies, where a multitude of people are gathered in a space, depending on the size, and sprinkling is required in those cases.
Thank you both for, for helping speak to that so briefly and in such a summary fashion. I know we all care very deeply about this, and this is an area where I, I wanna, I wanna say I started questioning C2 zoning when I've, actually before I took seat, hope here, about whether that's right, whether it's serving us well at this point in time. And it's been a long haul. Mr. White, do we have, I believe we have a contract coming in place this summer to begin the process of fixing that? Is that correct?
Well, it's a component of the downtown master plan, and the city will probably execute that contract completely this week. So we'll be starting on a downtown master plan. One of those components of that master plan will be a look at the zoning regulations and comparing them to similar-sized cities, using public comments, et cetera, to come up with the zoning that fits best for downtown Pasco.
I would just also add that the C2 zoning has nothing to do with the International Fire Code requirements.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something. So we're not talking like, the restaurant part, if people came in, obviously, if it doesn't have a fire system, he didn't have to maintain or didn't have to have a fire system, it's the back room, from what I heard, that that's the problem as far as people assembling in the back room. So, I mean, I love his restaurant, I love his food, and I know when your business was broken into, most of the council was there, I stayed for almost the afternoon, I do know you personally. And again, I'm sorry you feel this way about the council, because we actually do care about your business, whether you think we don't or not. And I'd hate to see you go, but again, it's never about the restaurant part, it was always about the back room, if, if I got my information correct. So again, it's...
This is my problem. They, you mentioned that they can make the rules more strict, but not less. How was the code enforcement, bend the rules? Because I was allowed to use the back for meetings or this and that. They bend the rules when they feel like it. But when they, after that Cortina guys, I know you guys don't like that name, but after that Cortina guys came out, the rules have to be strict. I was allowed to do karaoke, that, that means the rules would bend. I was allowed to use the back for meetings and stuff like that, that means... I was allowed to use the bank for meetings and stuff like that. That means the rules were bent. They were bent. They would allow me to do it. So that means don't come out with it being stricted. No, no, because when the city goes, they bend the rules. That's why I'm so upset. Only when that guy, I know you guys said the hecky name, but only after Cortina and the people came out, the rules have to be, find the rules.
Well
That bathroom was open for eight months, and nobody said anything. Cortina came out, bind the rule, ate the rule.
This is not going to give Yeah, this is not
You do a firewall, a viral thing, they give the permission, a guy, that's not believing, can answer. And the city go, because they read the code and they feel like, whatever they feel like, oh no, that's not the way to go. So the question to me is, why I was allowed to bend the rules before, and right now that they were Cortina came out, and now I'm allowed to be a torch.
So Mr. Zabel, is there any way we can have a meeting and go over this again?
Actually, do have a meeting set up with Mr. Morales at 11:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Right, anybody else from the audience who would like an opportunity to say something that's not on the agenda items? I'm going to give one more opportunity for, did we get Marla Marvin on the line, Mr. Funfar?
She is on now, Mr. Mayor. This is Marla. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Marla. How are you doing tonight?
Well, much better now that I have solved my technology problems. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. And it was just today that I looked at your agenda and realized I could speak tonight, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I actually live right outside of the Pasco urban growth boundary, so I'm not actually a constituent. But my kids go to Pasco schools and my address is Pasco, and I care deeply about the issue I'd like to talk to you about. I just learned about land that is going to be sold in, by the Franklin County Irrigation District. That land is actually going to be sold tomorrow. Maybe many of you saw the tri- Herald on the front page today. The headline is "Four Tri-Cities Waterfront Lots For Sale After Having The Same Owner For 100 Years." I know we have lovely Chihuana Park, but after Chihuana Park, there is no parkland from all the way, you know, all the way up to the Hanford Reach. Well, even after the Hanford Reach, there's no parkland. And I think it would be a wonderful gesture if the city would consider delaying the land sale tomorrow in order to consider whether this land might be usable as a pocket park. Obviously, we're not going to build another large Chihuana Park, but there's a bike trail that connects Chihuana Park down Court Street and then to this land and then out, continuing on toward the Corps of Engineers land. And I know it's a big ask. I know it's kind of a hail mary pass, frankly. I recognize that, but at this point, I understood from people like Cynthia Muse and others that the city is has hired a consultant to look at parkland, and I, this would be ideal for the city to to give its citizens access to the river that is so sorely missing in in West Pasco and northbound. If you look across the river, you see what Richland has done and all of that public access, and I'm just urging the city of Pasco to consider doing the same thing, even in just little pods. There's also that historic pump house that's been used for 100 years. So my request is for the city to slow down and take a look and consider whether it might be able to purchase at least one of those lots, which are going for, the last time we looked, around $200,000. So it's possibly affordable for the city, and I urge you to consider it. And looking at future generations and asking ourselves, are we being good ancestors? So thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm sorry I wasn't there in person and a little more organized, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Marvin. Appreciate it. And you have any comments, Mr. Zabel? I know we would like to, at a minimum, it would be nice if we could go purchase all the land we can get our hands on, but I know that that building may have some historical value to it, but have any comments?
Well, the building's not for sale. It's going to continue in use. So there's four lots. One has a single-family home on it. And it's, council's aware, we talked about this previously, it's about 1.3 acres. I think the bid right now for all four parcels is about $900,000 with a 7% fee on it. So we're about shy of a million dollars for 1.3 acres. It is waterfront property. No question that that's always, you know, a little bit more valuable. And as the caller mentioned, you know, the city's riverfront access, which extends basically from the marina essentially to almost Road 100, is kind of the end of the public access piece, you know. So that's a pretty good stretch, though, for a city, I think. And then, as the caller mentioned too, and alluded to, hired a consultant, not necessarily to look at land, to look at a parks master plan. And so that Parks Master Plan is going to be looking at opportunities for riverfront development in the city through the Harris Road properties, out through, it was, Rick, I always mess the name of rivers.
Shoreline.
Shoreline Drive, and the developments that are out there. So there are other opportunities of undeveloped land for that kind of purpose in the future.
Okay. And we don't have any control over stopping the sale of the property.
Yeah, there was a comment about pausing the sale of the property. That's, yeah, the city doesn't own the property, doesn't have control over that sale. All it could do would be to outbid the current $900,000 bid.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you again, Mr. Marvin, and if the council would like to entertain more discussion on that, we could, but I think we've already had discussions on that and are gonna I'm not sure we're ready to make a move at this time for that, so thank you for sharing with tonight. So next, on the agenda, first of all, is there anybody else that would like to share that's not on the agenda tonight? All right, great. Now we can move right on along and go to the next part of our meeting. And that's report from committees and/or officers. Anybody on the council have anything they'd like to share? And Councilmember Roach or Mayor Protem Barajas, if you have anything, just please speak up.
Nothing to share on my part. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm all set as well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarado.
I just wanted to report, I attended the Franklin Council of Governments. And just reporting that we're connecting our new economic development director to, I know that they're doing a lot more economic development activity over there. They have a new director and new staff there. And so, you know, we'll be setting up a meeting soon, so it's great to just see great response from the city to want to get engaged in what they're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. All right, next we'll go to item eight, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto and unlisted. Ordnances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We have a public meeting and resolution accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceeding. Director Rick White, would you like to kick us off with that, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. And council, I heard a brief summary of this item last, at the workshop meeting last week. But you can see the slide on the screen. It involves just under 600 acres. It's all located north of Burns Road, kind of centered on Road 52. The resolution is the first step in one of very many regarding annexation here in this state. The council is required to either accept or not accept the annexation, determine whether zoning will be established, and determine whether assumption of a proportionate share of bonded indebtedness will be required. The staff recommendation as contained in the resolution accepts the annexation, refers the matter to the hearing examiner for a recommendation on the zoning, and then also requires assumption of a proportionate share of bonded indebtedness.
Thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Mr. White, I'd sent some of these to you via email, I believe, over the weekend, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at these. But the questions I had first was, I know we're looking at recommending the inclusion of four additional parcels, two owned by the school district and two owned by Fred Olberding. Is, were both of those property owners favorable towards annexation?
They both were, Councilmember Maloney.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my other question is, obviously, we all know that the housing market has been very tight. And part of that is due to availability of land that can be developed at urban densities. You said it's about 600 acres of land. Is this intended to primarily be housing? And if so, can you expect, can you kind of speak to this annexation and other potential upcoming annexations as to how they may affect the housing supply?
Yes, it is primarily for housing. As you mentioned, one of the other owners is the Pasco School District. They don't, of course, intend it for housing, and Mr. Olberding's property, the other property included, a certain, a very small portion is for some commercial designation, commercial land use, and higher density, medium-density residential. But the bulk of the remainder, actually all of the remainder of the annexation area is designated for housing between two and five units an acre. So there's a lot of property there. Now, currently, there is not capacity in the sewer system for much more than 120, maybe 150 homes. But that's a problem that will be fixed as time goes on. And I'm sure the development community will be part of that solution, as well as the city's use of public funds in whatever ways are appropriate.
All right, thank you. Again, I know people are very concerned about housing prices right now, and rightfully so. They've been soaring. And so I'm hoping now that the UGA expansion has finally been approved by the county and we can actually start looking at annexation, that we can, you know, really be able to hopefully help increase the supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else? If not, then would entertain a motion, Mayor Protem?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move the council, I move the city council approve resolution number 4079, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Olberding and Farm 2005 or 2005 annexation, providing providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
Thank you. I probably jumped ahead of myself. This is an open public hearing, and so the public hearing is going to open now for comments.
Actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's the third item. This is not actually set for a hearing.
It says conducted public hearing.
I believe it's to set a meeting. Oh, this is the meeting? So you did not a hearing. Gotcha. Okay. This is one of these weird oddities in the statute where it's actually to have a meeting open to the public. It's not defined in the statute about what a public meeting is. It's not a public hearing, so you don't need to actually close the council meeting. It's just a public meeting.
Okay.
So you can take testimony, and so it will look an awful lot like a public hearing, but it's not technically a public hearing.
Okay, so now we're ready to accept comments from, yes, it looks like we have a comment from Mr. Baumann.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I represent a number of these parcels that were in the process of trying and starting the annexation process here and the development process. And as Director White shared, we do have some challenges with this, with sewer capacity and so forth. So we've had some very constructive meetings with city staff on ideas on where we go from this, but this is going to take a a significant lift from both the development as well as the city to make this happen. There's a, it's a long distance to go to get this out of here, and some of the ideas that have been shared is the Ryman Industrial Center that is recently a part of the city's new urban growth area, a part of that, and potentially could be a number of these things. It could be helped, but it's going to be, take a significant amount of cooperation and effort by both the development community as well as as the city to do this. So thank you for seeing this tonight. This is interesting, as we've, as we discussed, the staff and some of the development community on what this process is. We got this notice of intent to annex into the city's hands immediately, when the doors opened, when after the county passed this urban growth boundary expansion. And so thankful for city staff for getting right on that and it being before you right now, so thank you, and I'm certain that this area is going to be a bright spot in the city's future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Any other comments from the public?
Mayor, if I could, just a clarification, so when we're using the term sewer capacity here, it's conveyance, not treatment capacity. So I just wanted to, since we're discussing it, and not raise any undue concern, it's conveyance. And we knew that going into this project, and and we've been talking to the property owners about potential sewer LID or some other method of being able to convey that sewer to the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you for that clarification. So there's been a motion. And there's been a motion for the city council to approve resolution number 4079. And I would need a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Maloney. So I'm going to go ahead and read it one more time, just for the record, and that's approve a resolution number 4079, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Olberding and Farm 2005 annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether simultaneously zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required. So all those in favor of approving motion number 4079, signified by saying aye? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And passage unanimously. All right, thank you for that. And next, we'll move into a professional services agreement with RH2 Engineering for process water reuse facility, pre-treatment improvements, phase one, potable water and electrical improvements. And tonight, I know Steve is not, Director Worley is not here, so we have acting manager for Public Works, John Mian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Maria to speak on the PSA between the city and RH2.
Hello, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We are here presenting to you a PSA, a professional services agreement with RH2 for design services for portable water extension towards PWRF, as well as electrical improvements. When the city selected RH2 through a qualifications-based selection process, we identified a series of improvements that included portable water and electrical upgrades to the facility. While we continue to work towards building consensus on what technology to implement at PWRF, we know for sure that there are core improvements that are needed immediately, such as portable water to help with fire protection, as well as the ability to wash some of the screens and do some other cleaning in the facility that are needed, where we could benefit from water that doesn't have as high nitrogen as the well water. So we have identified these two improvements, water and power, and we are breaking the project into manageable PSAs that we can move forward with. This work is funded through a Public Works Board loan, which the city already has available to use, and we could cover the whole cost of these PSA through this loan. And the current schedule for this project is to begin design immediately and be ready to advertise for bids in the winter. With that, I am happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you so much for the presentation. So very supportive of this, no questions there, but I did want to ask about the status of the solid waste removal and the odors associated with this facility and how that has been working and changing over time. And it's very unfair of me to spring that on you, so I welcome And it's very unfair of me just to spring that on you, so I welcome any, uh, member of staff who'd like to speak to this. But I know that we, when, when change, we still, um, still get quite the, uh, the odor. And I was, when we were, I think we were hoping that was gonna be more effective than it had been perhaps we've noticed it to be. So, is that fair to ask now or would you rather respond to me offline or at a later date?
Well, I, I will, uh, if, if council will indulge me, I'll, I'll mention, uh, we spent about two million dollars cleaning our, our EQ pond, uh, dredged it out, hauled it off, I think that's made a, a pretty significant difference in the odor issues. And then, in terms of capacity to the plant and some of the other, uh, major items occurring, I'm gonna defer to, uh, Ms. Sarah to talk about those things.
Okay, so the pond cleaning is complete and as far as capacity, uh, we continue to work towards improving the capacity. We have some limitations currently, but we are able to serve our current users. In order to bring new users or allow our users to expand, this series of projects will help us get there. For example, the portable water in conjunction with a more reliable or bigger source of power would allow us to heat water in order to wash off our blinding screens. We have screens that remove some of those solids as the flow comes in and those are blinding because there's some starches and other things that build up. Now, hot water, pressure hot water will help us increase the capacity of those screens and use them at full, at their full design capacity. Uh, of course, following this PSA and it was mentioned in our packet, we have another PSA, we're working on scoping for winter storage. The second PSA will allow us to design more storage for processes existing and future, a combination of that. Um, to happen here in the next year. Uh, and then finally, other treatment improvements are planned as a phase three and you will see this in the CIP as well. This is, uh, consistent with our CIP planning.
Great, I appreciate that additional information. Obviously, you know, we got a lot of complaints about the odor and I'm glad we've done a little bit of something about that. Um, even if we can ever, may perhaps never affect it as much as we'd all like. Um, and obviously with the, uh, I think last week we had, um, two public announcements for, um, for expanses between Dairy Gold and Reasers. Um, and so between the two of those, that is, uh, I know that's going to put additional burdens on this facility, so I'm glad we've been forward looking at trying to expand that capacity for exactly this purposes, so that's almost a, I would say almost a billion dollars worth of construction. Something like an estimated eight hundred million dollars of construction for industrial, for agricultural industrial. And a facility like this is part of the reason why they can come here and want to come here, so, um, yeah, anyways, continue to be, uh, very supportive of this project, thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else? Alright, if not, then I would entertain a motion Mayor Protem.
Absolutely Mayor, give me just a second, I exited out of my page. Okay, I move to approve resolution number four zero eight zero, authorizing execution of the professional services agreement by the city facilities, city manager with RH two engineering for the process water reuse facility improvements project base one. Potable wa- portable water and electrical improvements project.
Thank you Mayor Protem, I moved, uh, so there's been a motion to approve, uh, resolution number four zero eight zero, do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign? It passes unanimously, thank you. Alright, thank you for that, thank you Maria and, uh, Mr. Malon. So next we'll move into the next on the agenda item and that's unfinished business. And we have, uh, Daniel Luke, short plaid sewer services requ- uh, requirement appeal continued from the June twenty first, two thousand twenty one council meeting. Uh, so this is a continuing, a continuing hearing, so there's no need to reopen.
Uh, it, uh, this is a, uh, very kind of odd situation that we have here, it's an open record appeal. So it is, uh, a situation where the council will be taking, uh, testimony and will be creating a record and then will be making a decision, uh, based on that. So, uh, it's not, uh, a public hearing in that sense, but it is actually a, um, a procedure that, uh, the, a quasi judicial, uh, procedure. Um, and, uh, to that point, I think there's been some questions about, uh, some, uh, previous ex parte contacts that some council members may have had. Um, uh, we, we don't know that, uh, this type of hearing is, is specifically a quasi judicial hearing, but out of an abundance of caution, our recommendation is that if any, uh, council members have had any kind of ex parte contact, and that's just defined as any kind of contact, uh, or any, uh, communication with anyone who was either for or against this item, uh, outside of this setting. Uh, this would be the time to disclose that, uh, and then, uh, put that on the record. And then, uh, if, uh, folks feel that, uh, uh, that, 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 then the public, uh, has a right at that point to, uh, uh, challenge any, uh, person, uh, continuing to move forward, uh, on, on the, uh, decision. And then, um, then the council member at that point, uh, would need to decide whether they feel like they could still be impartial, uh, based on that communication. So, uh, at this point, we just, uh, need to kind of, uh, get everything out, uh, if there's been any kind of communications, uh, between, uh, folks for or against. Uh, just kind of one by one, uh, if we could go through that, I think that'll really, uh, protect us from, uh, any kind of challenge down the road.
So I would like to begin, I would like to begin by disclosing that I did, um, meet, uh, Mr. Danielik, um, at the boat launch. Um, did not have any discussion further into this topic. Just mentioned that this was coming up at the next council meeting, but nothing was discussed about the actual, uh, so I feel I can still be impartial. And, uh, still make a, a decision based on, on these facts, so I wanted to make sure I got that disclosed. Uh, next we'll go to Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, thank you Mayor Martinez, um, I had received an email from, uh, um, uh, Mrs. Uh, Gerth, who I, I think is also at the, the email or, um, close enough to it is also, uh, uh, um, introduced as exhibit G. So that was an email I received, I've not received any other contact about this. I believe I can continue to be impartial.
Is that, is that good?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, excuse me, yeah, just at this point, we just need to put, uh, all the, um, communications on the record. At that point, then we'll open it up, uh, to any members of the public who feel that they would like to challenge, uh, any council members' participation. And at that point, um, uh, you can decide that you're, uh, you're still impartial.
Yes, because I, I still, uh, I also received that same email, uh, from Mrs. Gerth and, uh, still feel the same way, so Councilmember Alvarado?
Yeah, just, uh, disclosing the same thing, I, uh, got, got the same email, I replied with thank you for the background on this issue. Um, I, I did look at the agenda, didn't see a cue by the quasi judicial, so, uh, I'm, I'm glad to know that. We can disclose that now, I, I don't feel like it, uh, impacted my views with any information that I considered new that I hadn't thought of. But, um, I, I do feel like I can be impartial.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Alvarado, Councilmember Maloney.
Uh, yeah, I also did get the email as well and I asked for more information on this and she replied and I was like, okay, I remember that I actually had heard this. I initially thought I hadn't, um, so that was mine, I think I could be as far as, uh, impartial on this as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Ma- uh, Mayor Protem Barajas and I would also like to disclose that I received the same email everyone is, uh, discussing about. However, because I'm away in trainings, I have not even read the email.
Alright, thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay.
So, at this point, uh, if anybody, uh, in the public, uh, would like to, uh, challenge, uh, uh, any member, uh, council member, uh, participating in the, uh, decision, this would be the time to do that.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to challenge, uh, a- a- any one of us having this information and be, being impartial? And if there's not, then we can open it up to public comment?
Uh, that's correct, so at that point, then you're in the testimony phase where you would then, uh, folks would, uh, need to come up and, uh, speak on it. Uh, you would, uh, probably take an introduction from Mr. White so that we all can, uh, be on the same page and then, uh, uh, you could open it up.
Okay, Director White?
Thank you Mayor and council, and as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, you had, have seen this item before, uh, almost exactly a month ago. Uh, it was continued, um, it involves, uh, ju- just a little under two and a half acres, uh, into a three lot subdivision within the city limits on the west side of Road ninety six. The short plaid application was conditioned upon providing sewer service in addition to the water service requested through the short plaid application. Uh, through several, actually fairly lengthy process of exhausting appeals at the administrative level. It comes to council now for the appeal of that condition requiring the extension of sewer service. As noted in the, um, agenda report, uh, there's a, a lengthy analysis, uh, centered around title sixteen and the three criteria that, uh, staff feels, uh, the, uh, Pasco municipal code requires to be addressed. One is, uh, determining whether special circumstances are applicable to this property differing from, uh, what's normally considered in the area. The other is, does it, uh, the appeal preserve a substantial property right that's also enjoyed by other, uh, lands within the area? And then the third, uh, the catchall of almost all appeals is, is it detrimental to the public health or safety? Um, staff has, uh, given council the, uh, recommendation that the appeal be denied because those three criteria, at least in, uh, the staff's perspective, cannot be met. Uh, a key issue, I think, as, as explained in the agenda report several times, is that, uh, this is not a s- uh, permit for a single family home on an existing lot. But it is a, uh, request for subdividing, uh, a lot within the city limits. And whether the, uh, perpetuation of, uh, onsite septic systems within the city limits is contrary to, um, the comprehensive plan and provisions of the Growth Management Act. Which is why the staff recommendation for, uh, denial of the appeal was put forward.
Thank you Director White. Uh, Councilmember Alvarado?
Oh, my, my mic was on, I could wait until after if I, if you wanna open it up.
Alright, well, let's see here, um. Well, you wanna go ahead and, and make a comment before the, or?
I'll do that.
Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. So anybody from the public, uh, would like to come up and speak on this issue? Is the, is the mic on, sir? There you go, thank you.
Thank you for this oppor- opportunity, um, I'm Tony Danieluk and this is my brother-in-law Vitali. We're the owners of the land that we're talking about today and I just kinda wanted to give you guys the history on it. So, almost a year ago, uh, both of us, we sold our homes, uh, to proceed with the, with the dream of ours to buy a land that we could split and both of the families built on there, um, and live there. So when we found this land and made an offer on it, we were given ten days, um, contingency to find out if we could split it and build on it. And I called, um, the city, I first talked to, uh, Darcy and she referred me to, uh, uh, Tyler Johnson. And, um, he looked into the situation and I told him that we would like to split it at least into two pieces. And, um, and he said that, uh, I said, w- are we gonna be able to split it? And he said, well, in the city limits, you need to connect it to, to the water that's there, so that's, that's in, uh, that's not a problem. But you will need to connect it to a sewer, but when he looked into it, he said, well, if it's over two hundred feet away and in this case it's almost over two thousand feet away. He said, I don't see it a problem that you will be able to, uh, apply for the waiver and waive this. So based on that, you know, within two days of that contingency, um, we, we took, uh, you know, we, we bought the land and then proceeded with, uh, you know, hiring the surveyor and submitting. Um, we're not contractors, we're just, you know, homeowners trying to proceed our dream. So, when we bought it and now we get this information that we can't split it, you know, we're cur- currently in renting and it's been almost a year, so it's, it makes it tough because everybody around us, they're on septics. And, uh, we kinda looked into it, how much it would be to bring it from either Argent or the other one and it's close to three hundred or over three hundred thousand. And, you know, we, we can't afford it to, to, to pay that damn much money to bring the sewer there. So we just, you know, asking if there's something else, if we, if they, you know, we got approved from, from Health Department for septics. It's good soil down there, you know, if it's not, if we can't do three pieces, can we do two, two pieces? So we could live there and, you know, that's all we're asking. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak on this topic? So, going twice? One more call for the audience to speak on this topic? Okay, so at this time, um, I don't have to close the hearing or, cause there's no hearing that we're actually?
No, no, this is not, yeah, public hearing.
So at this time, um, any of the council members have any other questions or comments for staff or, of anybody? Mr. Alvarado?
Just curious if, um, there was, uh, further conversation, uh, with staff after the last meeting to, um, be able to see if there was some, some, uh, uh, different alternatives or different ways to, uh, look at the, at the land uses there. Um, I know they mentioned, uh, from three to two, I don't know if that's, you know, was discussed and giving, giving options like that. Just, just curious if there was any, anything, uh, further that was, um, explored, uh, just to see if there's got some, uh, ability to use their land and that.
No, the, the number of lots was not explored or discussed. However, um, staff had been trying to, uh, use, uh, the property directly southwest of this property that the city owns, that does have frontage on Road sixty, uh, excuse me, on Road one hundred. It's, uh, the site of a future fire station. And, uh, to make a long story short, there was discussion at last week's hearing examiner meeting, not only, uh, about the fire station, which is on the agenda, but the property owner to the south, which has a mirror image, uh, easement, uh, that straddles both those property lines. And, uh, we, uh, the city engineer and I discussed today the possibility of taking sewer from Road one hundred as opposed to going straight north or straight south, which is where the two thousand foot distance comes from. And, uh, trying to go through the, uh, city-owned property and/or the access easement on the adjoining property, getting it somehow to the, to Road ninety six. I don't have the mechanics or the guarantee that that would work, but it is a possibility. And, uh, as for the possibility of using two lots instead of three, I can't speak to that, but I, uh, suspect, uh, that's probably just, um, another consideration for council in this appeal process. And, uh, I, Mr. Maloney and I were having a discussion before the meeting, I did wanna point out that we conducted an analysis of the development potential, uh, roughly within a half mile of this site and ended up with a very meager number in terms of providing sewer service in that regard. The analysis though, only used as the assumption, single-family home permits regardless of the size of the lot. It did not analyze development potential, whereas you might take a five acre parcel and subtract a certain amount for roads and come up with a certain amount of lots, it did not do that because of the uncertainty of providing that analysis and what that would even mean. But it was only for single-family lots, the very last exhibit in your, um, in your, uh, agenda packet.
City Manager Dave Zabel?
You know, I, I think, uh, you know, the information that, uh, Director White gave us about a possible alternative route for sewer is probably, in, in my estimation or opinion, a good, good reason to maybe table this for a couple of weeks and give us a chance to explore that. And then, and then get back to council if that, if that's a feasible alternative to, uh, the, uh, I think seventeen hundred lineal feet is what I heard a few minutes ago, uh, alternative to the south.
Yes, I was, um, I was not aware of the two thousand feet, uh, and I heard a three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar number and I wasn't aware of that. But, at this point, um, I'm, I'm, I'm apologize for how long it's taking, but, um, I think maybe tabling it for two more weeks to come up with a plan that we can make this work, uh, would be worthwhile, uh, in my opinion, uh, Councilmember Alvarado?
Yeah, I think, uh, keeping, keeping, uh, the, the applicant appraised, uh, I guess would be, would be good. I mean, I, I, it's not a good situation to be in and, you know, you have land that you can't use. So, uh, perhaps any progress, I think being able to keep them appraised would be a good courtesy.
Thank you Councilmember Alvarado, Councilmember Maloney?
Uh, thank you Mayor Martinez, um, and I thank you Mr. White for, for the conversation earlier and the, um, the answering of my questions and some of the anticipation of other questions. I mean, I, I, I certainly feel for the, um, the appellant here, this is, that's a, that's a large dollar sign for, for something, for, for an ask. Um, and currently, you know, I, I, I struggle to see where in the analysis the city's done where, where this, this, you know, makes a lot of sense. Would be a worthwhile investment for the city, let alone, um, you know, for a private developer. So, I would certainly be interested in, in how can we make this work? I'm very cautious about unintended consequences of, of, um, of approving an appeal that, um, may, that may open us up to, um, to certain people do, um, asking for appeals that maybe aren't as deserving as this one might be, so I'm very cognizant of that fact. To certain people do, um asking for appeals that maybe aren't as deserving as this one might be, so I'm very cognizant of that fact. So if we have an, so I was, I was going to, I was going to ask if we could uh see about um, um, um delaying a vote on this for two more weeks. Will we wait for staff to work through more of this, so I appreciate if that's the direction that other council members wanna go and I would be very supportive of that. I hate to make you wait longer, but I, I, I would rather get this right than get this wrong, so um that's my preference, thank you.
Thank you Councilwoman Maloney. Is uh, do I feel like that's the same sentiment of the rest of the council?
Mayor, this is uh Mayor Protem Barajas, uh I agree, um we can delay it for a little bit more. Just to make sure we're, we have the, all the information needed and uh. Yep, so I'm, I agree with uh delaying it a bit, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Roach, do you have the same sentiment?
I do.
Alright, thank you, if that's the case, uh the only thing, other thing that I would like to bring up is um, you know, it is very difficult. When people are dealing with land issues and even building issues that we, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing this uh consistency of. Somebody from the city said something and, you know, we're going on something that was said. And we have to make it a point to get these things in writing before, uh because quite frankly. You know, it's really difficult to come back and uh, and say, well, this was told to me and there's nothing in writing that says that this was the case. So I would encourage uh maybe staff to communicate that a little bit better. Um and also to the public, um to ensure that when these situations come up. These are very serious and very personal situations that obviously can be very emotional at many times. But um, but it's very important that things are in writing and, and documented. So that we could have more legs to stand on or more of a foundation to stand on when we're making our decisions. So with that, uh I would like to table, um with the staff, yes, Mr. Ferguson, how?
Yep, since this is an open record appeal hearing, uh if somebody could make a motion to continue uh for a date certain and then have that seconded, that'd be probably best.
Okay, perfect, so uh, the Mayor Protem, would you like to make the motion?
Sh- uh sure, um the wording, I move to.
Table?
I'm trying to figure out the wording here. I move to delay?
Continue.
Yeah, to continue.
I move to continue the process, I didn't write anything down, I move to continue the process. Uh to a later date established by uh city staff.
Okay, uh we could, I'm sorry, yeah, Madam Mayor Protem, if you could just make a motion to continue to. Uh continue the open record appeal hearing to August second, that would be great.
Thank you, I move to continue, oh my goodness, I move to continue the pro- process to August second.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue the appeal process uh till August second, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Councilmember Maloney, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, passing the analysis, so those will be continued until August second, so thank you very much for that. Next, we have new business, uh City Manager Abel, do you have anything you'd like to share in new business?
Uh I do have a few items under miscellaneous.
Okay, so we'll move right along to uh miscellaneous.
So I did wanna share with you the, the passing uh last week of Paul Bruner. And Paul was a reserve officer with us uh since nineteen eighty seven, thirty-four years. And uh, he was a volunteer and he was the lieutenant that ran the uh reserve officer in it. So, uh without uh, the chief shared with me earlier today, Paul was also uh part of a team that was working statewide. Uh uh with the academy to overhaul the curriculum for the officer, reserve officer program, so he was involved uh at the state level. And uh he was also organizer of the regional reserve officer academy for the tri-city. So, he's very well known in law enforcement circles and in the region of the state and we're gonna miss him, chief, did you wanna?
No, uh Paul Service, uh he retired as a captain with Hanford Patrol, so he did double duty out on the Hanford site. Retired a few years ago and then, as, as the city manager had mentioned, over thirty years volunteering his time. And running our uh reserve program and lending aid to our officers, he was actually a uniformed reserve officer for, for all those years. So, it'll be a, a great uh loss to uh our department and to this community, so thank you.
So very, very frequent uh site at uh big city events where reserve officers were used. Uh from the recreation side, uh did wanna note, uh movie and music in the park. Uh will take place Memorial Park this Friday evening, July twenty-third, so that's back in swing. Um Tri-City Steel Drum Band and the movie will be The Book of Life. Uh Lamson Kebel Bridge Run Registration, seems like, it's hard to believe it's here already, but that, that's opened up. And um, and then uh wanted to make council aware, save the date, uh I know we've done it email-wise as well. But uh National Night Out is coming up August third, uh these are let, um. If you could let April or, or myself or Adam know, and we can make sure we coordinate with P, P uh Police Department on, on getting you out to the different sites. So, that's all I have for this evening.
How about the, the boat races, are we um, there's a boat races going on this weekend or we have staff or anybody's gonna? Do you have somebody working that, that event?
Yeah, the police department is geared up, um and I know uh Parks will have uh people down there and they're partnering with the fire department. Will have a uh joint command post, so it'll be, look much like uh years past and it looks like it's gonna be a fairly open event. Um and should look like uh past years, so we are geared up and ready for uh this weekend, we're excited about it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's quite the structure on this side is what there, what has been in years past, right? Just because of the limitation on craft.
Ri- right, from, from, I think the city side, from police and fire were gearing up uh as, as normal, but.
Well, our hearts go out to the family uh who had the passing. And also, um, uh I just got information that uh we lost one of our own eight, you know, a, a youth. Uh in a car accident near Road sixty-eight here today, so I just wanna ask everybody to be careful. Um the boat races will be a busy event and it may not be as hot as it has been, but um please stay hydrated with water, please. Um, anybody else have anything for miscellaneous? Okay, if not, then uh, do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
Alright, with that then, uh it is eight seventeen and this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.